Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is March 12, 2015. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand for a moment in Southern prayer. After that, I'll turn the program over to Dr. Bracy. You may be seated. Dr. Bracy, at this time, I'm turning the program over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bracy. I'd like to, first of all, say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for joining us tonight for our school board meeting. At the... If you look at your agenda, we will now have the statement... Well, the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm sorry, by Kirsten Chandler, 11th grade at Churchland High School. I have been provided the community engagement highlights for Churchland High School, those you should have at your station. But just to give you a little information on Kirsten, she's an 11th grader, member of the junior class at Churchland High School, president of the class of 2016. Works with her fellow classmates to plan fundraisers and events for the junior class. Member of the PAWS Club, Pounds Animals Worth Saving. Also assists with SCA as the needs arises. Serves as Churchland Junior Marshall, student ambassador. Pursues honors and AP classes. Is also desirous of attending Georgetown University, where she plans to pursue a course of study leading to a degree in international business. Very impressed, Kirsten.
Good evening Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chairman Parent, School Board members, Dr. Bracy, and all those assembled this evening. As the principal of Churchland High School and on behalf of our entire Churchland High School family, I am honored tonight to present to you two of our finest truckers, Kirsten Chandler and Everett Hole. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now Everett, before you get started, let me give him a little background about you. He's an 11th grader, also a member of the junior class at Churchland High School. Serves as a junior marshal. Has taken honors classes since he enrolled at Churchland High School. Has compiled a 3.95 GPA. Is desirous of attending Virginia State University, the University of Tennessee, at Memphis, or Penn State. Also wants to pursue a course of study leading to a bachelor's degree as a certified nurses and athletes.
Good evening Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chairman Parent, School Board members, and distinguished guests. I extend a special welcome to our new division superintendent, Dr. Eli Bracy III. We are excited to have you as part of our school family and welcome you and your family to Portsmouth. Churchland High School has a long history of excellence. We started off strong in this area. For over 200 years, the community of Churchland has had an established school to educate its young people. Today, we celebrate being one of the top schools in the area. We are fully accredited by the state in advanced ed. Met all our AMOs last year. Our Center of Excellence for the Fine and Performing Arts have a championship athletic program. And graduates some of the best and brightest students in Hampton Roads. In fact, our 95% on-time graduation rate is one of the highest in the state. Several years ago, the central administrative staff began presenting the attendance banner to the school with the highest percentage of student attendance. Since the inception of this honor, Churchland High School has held the attendance banner for its division. It has never left our school and we plan on keeping it here. By doing things the trucker way, CHS has risen to greatness in the community, city, region, and state. The academic program at Churchland has many aspects that make it successful. We provide a transition program for all freshmen as they enter CHS to help them adjust. But we also have our Freshman Academy program to help those students who may need extra attention as they adjust to high school. Many of our students take honors courses and we are constantly adding to our advanced placement offerings. This past year, our AP program was awarded the AP Honorable, a national honor, for helping increase our enrollment of minority and low socioeconomic students in our AP programs. CHS has been a driving force behind the door enrollment and first college programs. This year, we sent 88 students to the first college program at TCC. Many of our students participate in AC-13 and we house a horticulture program in our beautiful greenhouse. Our students' academic success is reflected in their acceptance of some of the best colleges in the country, including the University of Virginia, the College of William &amp; Mary, and Virginia Tech. Last year, our students were offered over $3 million in scholarships. Churchland High School is also the Center of Excellence for the Fine and Performing Arts. The program teaches music, dance, theater, and visual arts to students from all over the city. We recently had one of our chorus students play third at all-state competition. Our band has won numerous awards and the art scholars had their work featured at Student Gallery. The art scholars had several winners at the Southeast Region at Large Division of the Scholastic Art Awards. Our theater and film students do our morning announcements each day to be shown as a video. The truckers have found success on the field and court, just as they have in the classroom. Many of our student athletes have won all district, all regional, and even all-state honors. Our swim team and indoor track team just returned from competing at their state meets. Chris Walker won the regional title in boys' 55-meter indoor track recently. CHS was the conference 17 champion in boys' cross-country, boys' swimming, and girls' swimming. More importantly, our teams are known for having good sportsmanship and representing CHS with class.
The people make CHS great. I know that I have enjoyed the many friendships I have made at CHS. The faculty and staff go above and beyond. They are not stereotypical teachers, but caring individuals who work to meet the needs of each student. My AP classes have helped me have a deeper understanding of what it means to challenge myself and taking these courses have been one of the best decisions I have made. The faculty encourage students to get involved in all aspects of school, whether it be sports, the arts, or one of the many clubs we offer. I am the president of the class of 2016. This has taught me great leadership skills and the ability to work with others. Planning the prom this year has been a huge undertaking, but my fellow classmates and I have worked together to plan what I know will be a fantastic event. Both Everett and I serve as junior marshals, a club selected by our faculty to serve as student ambassadors of CHS. I am also a member of PAWS, our animal awareness club, but we have something for everyone. Truckers Against Bullying is a new club that educates our students about positive behaviors and several of our clubs encourage volunteering in our community. Our NHS members helped Churchland Elementary with its Valentine's Day event last month and worked with Edmark Hospice on its Valentine's Day cards. Being asked to condense all the wonderful things about Churchland High School in a few minutes is impossible. Even if I had an hour, I would only skim the surface of what an extraordinary school this is. We are not satisfied, though. Dr. Bechtall will continue to lead the truckers to the next level of greatness as we move forward. The first 200 years might have started off strong, but the next 200 will find us finishing stronger. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you all again for the opportunity to showcase our fantastic school and our awesome students. At this time, I would like to introduce the family members that are here with Kirsten and Everett. With Kirsten tonight are her mother Regina Chandler, her brother Nicholas, who's in the 6th grade at Churchland Elementary, and her sister Jillian, who is a 9th grader at Churchland High School. With Everett tonight is his mother, Ms. Sonia Hole. I would also like any of the rest of our Churchland High School family, faculty, students, and staff who came out tonight to please stand and join me in thanking the school board for all that you do all year, but especially as we celebrate the conclusion of School Board Appreciation Month and welcome our new superintendent. Churchland High School has provided for all of the board members a daisy that was raised by our horticulture students. And in that daisy, you will see a token of our Finish Stronger Portsmouth Public School motto this year. Thank you again from Churchland High School.
Thank you, Dr. Bechtall, for your first-year leadership that you provided at Churchland High School. And for Kirsten and Everett, you are both fine examples of what Portsmouth Public Schools is all about. You exemplify your knowledge, your understanding, and your love for Portsmouth Public Schools and we greatly appreciate it. And I want to also thank your family, who's done a wonderful job with you. And we're going to continue to pray for your success and we thank you for joining us on tonight. Thank you.
Don't leave yet. Don't leave. Hold on just a minute. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you Chairman Bridgeford. I just want to say I am truly impressed. You all are outstanding and you certainly represent Portsmouth Public Schools well. Thank you. And thank you all, all the schools, for the wonderful goodies. I think we need a little tractor trailer to take. But thank you so much for School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you Chairman Bridgeford. Yes, I wanted to say good luck to both of you. Just you standing there and so forth with the last couple of minutes, I'm sure you're going to do some amazing things. When I walked in here, I have to echo the same sentiments. I felt like it was Christmas all over again. We've gotten everything from preschool to some elementary schools and then, of course, the high school. From flowers to cards made by preschoolers, which brought a smile to my face and so forth. So thank you very much for all the things that you guys have given us this evening.
Okay. At this time, I call your attention to the next agenda item. And that's your attendance. Please indicate your attendance by electronic roll.
Dr. Whitaker.
Madam Clerk?
Eight members present, one member absent.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm calling your attention to the... for the approval of the agenda. And I'd like to make the following additions to it. Item number 11A. Changing the 2014-15 calendar for the makeup for the inclement days. That's for electronic vote. Item number 11B. Spring break, one-time payment for employees. That's electronic vote. And item number 12A. Revised budget for FY14-15, electronic vote, for his pleasure.
Second.
Moving properly second, that we make the... that we make the follow... add the fault... the additions as suggested. Any discussion? If not, members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll.
Dr. Whitaker.
Dr. Whitaker. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is item number two for recognition, School Board Appreciation Month. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Bridge. As Ms. Williams had already stated, the wonderful gifts that you all received. There were so many up here. Mr. Wiggins was so gracious enough to bring a box behind you to place all of those, but we wanted to make sure that you saw all of those as you walked in to see the appreciation that not only the division, but other neighbors and friends have for you. And just a small token to say thank you. At this time, I would like to present to you certificates from VSBA Honoring Board, School Board Month. So at this time, I will start down here with Mr. Batilo and pass those out.
Mr. Parent?
I want to thank all of you for the nice gifts and showing your appreciation to the school board this month. I want to say to the Wilson Culinary Arts, I've already gotten into the chocolate. And the other thing is that last year, we received one of these plants and I gave it to my wife and she's kept it alive. So I have another one that she's got to keep alive. So thank you all very much for all the nice goodies. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, and to add to that, I know... I'm hoping that I am correct in remembering who the card was from, but we got a thank you card. And I forgot to lay... I forgot to read the last meeting. And I think that was from the West Haven staff. And we receive things all the time and sometimes I try... I remember to read them out, but I don't like to neglect anyone. But thank you for all the gifts and you can have my... you can have my chocolates. I'm trying to keep my weight down.
I've already eaten one of them.
Okay, let's move along. Thank you. Next is the recognition. Item number three. Presentation of recognition of schools with highest attendance rate for January. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Bracy. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Wiggins for this presentation, please.
Because we have some new school board members who were not here initially when the flag, a banner was shown, we'll hold it up so you can see. And also for Dr. Bracy. The January 2015 monthly student attendance report was scheduled to be presented in February, but because of the snow, the meetings were canceled. So as a part of the school division's tribute to the fine ladies and gentlemen who were there, this, I mean, the attendance report reflects our sincere appreciation to you. Again, I... we normally say it's one month behind, but this time it's two months behind. But the average monthly percentage of student attendance for the elementary schools for January 2015, when we look at it for last year, 2014, it was 93.38 hundreds percent. And for the current year, 94.38 percent. And we had almost a one percentage point increase. It's 97 hundredths of a percentage point. When we look at the school or schools that took first and second place honors, we commend Churchland Elementary School with 96.55 percent. If I'm not mistaken, the principal and assistant principal are here. Would you please stand? Churchland Primary and Intermediate School took second place honors with 95.95 percent. And I would point out that as you look at it, the difference separating the first and second place winners is 61 hundredths of a percentage point. We move next to the middle schools. Last year, it was 93.40 percent. And for the current year, 94.77 percent. A difference... an increase of 1.37 percentage points. Taking first place honors with 95.99 percent is Waters Middle School. And I believe I see the principal. With second place... In second place is Churchland Middle School. The principal and assistant prin... or one of the assistant principals is here. And again, the difference is 83 hundredths of a percentage point. And as you will recall, Waters and Churchland Middle have a love affair where they exchange that banner from one month to the next. We move next to the high schools. Last year was 92.69 percent. And for the current year, 93.39 percent. And it went up by 70 hundredths of a percentage point. Once again, taking first place honors is Churchland High School with 96.14 percent. And Dr. Bechtall, you've already seen her. Taking second place honors is Woodrow Wilson High School with 93.35 percent. And the difference between the first and second place is 2.79 percentage points. We move next to our specialty facilities. Last year, for 2014, it was 85.14 percent. And for the current year, 91.900. The difference here, it went up by almost six percentage points. 5.95 percent. Coming in first place is Churchland Preschool. The principal is apologetic, but there was a... there is an activity at the school tonight involving the parents. So we excused her from being here. But she took first place honors, or the school took first place honors with 93.12 percent. Coming in second place is Mount Herman Preschool with 94.04 percent. And again, the difference separating the two is 2.08 percentage. When we look at the school division as a whole, for last year was 91.58 percent. For the current year, 93.71 percent. The difference is that it went up by 2.13 percent. The next is a summary. At the elementary, 94.35 percent. Middle, 94.77 percent. High school, 93.39 percent. Specialty, 91.09 percent. And division-wide, 94.71 percent. And it was appropriate to insert the division superintendent's picture here because he, along with the other members of the staff, extend their sincere and heartfelt appreciation to everyone involved in the all-important task of getting students to and from school. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda for electronic vote is the consideration of a resolution recognizing music in our Schools Month for March 2015. Dr. Bracy?
Mr. Wiggins?
Because of the change in dates, we were scheduled to have a teacher representing the art teachers and the music teachers. But because of commitments and we sort of felt that we couldn't demand that they come, so we would just go ahead and read the resolution. We apologize for it. But anyway. Whereas the study of music contributes to the development of our young people through the acquisition of heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity. And whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of music types and active musical experiences. And whereas music and the other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment. And whereas the Portsmouth Public Schools have primary responsibility for preparing and encouraging young people to assume a productive role in society. And whereas the Music Research and Teacher Education National Conference has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month and has selected "Music Makes Me" as this year's theme. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board endorse the observance of music in our Schools Month as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education and that teachers, students, parents, and all citizens be encouraged to participate in this special recognition. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's permanent records and that copies be sent to all schools and administrative offices within the division. And be it finally resolved that a framed copy of this expression be formally presented to a classroom art teacher serving as a representative of our core of music teachers at the panel's regular monthly meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 12, 2015.
For his pleasure?
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt the resolution as given. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Item number five. Consideration of the Resolution Recognizing Youth Art Month, March 2015. Dr. Bracy?
Mr. Wiggins, will you continue, please?
Resolution. Whereas Youth Art Month, YAM, is observed annually during March as a means of emphasizing the value of art in the development of our nation's young people and as a means of soliciting continued support for high-quality instructional programs in art education. And whereas this yearly celebration helps youngsters develop a lifelong appreciation for and an understanding of the creative process. And whereas art significantly enhances the morale and quality of the school environment. And whereas the Council for Art Education Incorporated and Art and Creative Materials Incorporated have designated March as Youth Art Month and have selected "Art Builds Bridges" as this year's theme. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board endorse the observance of Youth Art Month. Provide a means for school personnel to support the purposes and practices of art education and encourage teachers, students, parents, and all citizens to take cognizance of the importance of art education. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's permanent records and that copies be sent to all schools and administrative offices within the division. And be it finally resolved that a framed copy of this expression be presented formally to a classroom art teacher serving as a representative of our core of art educators at the panel's regular monthly meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 12, 2015.
For his pleasure?
Moving forward.
Second.
It's moving properly second that we adopt resolutions given in the discussion. If not, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Item number six. Consideration of the Resolution Recognizing Employee Appreciation Month, March 2015. Dr. Bracy?
Mr. Wiggins, will you continue?
Resolution of special recognition. Whereas the concept of a free and equal education is an inherent American tradition and an essential aspect of our nation's strength. And whereas the public schools of Portsmouth are vital to society's success. And whereas we have a shared responsibility for academic excellence in Portsmouth, stimulate... And whereas we have assured responsibility for academic excellence in Portsmouth, stimulating the minds, strengthening the bodies, and nurturing the noblest dreams of the students we teach. And whereas the fine men and women of this school division have been and still are diligent guardians of the welfare of the young people entrusted to our care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board designate March 2015 as Employee Appreciation Month. And be it further resolved that this body extend its heartfelt appreciation to the dedicated core of professional and support personnel who proudly give of themselves in a selfish manner to provide high-quality educational programs and services for the young people enrolled in the public schools of this historic municipality. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be made a part of the school board's official minutes and that copies be forwarded to all schools, administrative units, and city libraries for public display.
Voice's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's moved in proper second that we adopt the resolution as given in a discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Okay, item number seven for electronic vote, consideration of the minutes. A special meeting slash public work session, January 15, 2015. A regular monthly meeting, January 29, 2015. Board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's moved in proper second that we adopt the minutes as given in a discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, item number eight for discussion, public comment on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes.
Okay.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to three minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Mr. Ty Muttlow?
Good evening, Honorable Board and our new members. Last time I saw you, I was moving to the beach, and I'm back. Our issue is that I'm having is that we transfer students in in our seven cities.
Could you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm Ty Muttlow, and I'm at 317 Kane Road.
Okay, thank you.
Our issue is that when we have students that transfer in from our seven-city schools, we seem to have an issue with them losing credits. I transferred him from Virginia Beach back up here, and he basically lost a half a year of school. And I find that to be very hard, based upon the way that the school systems are run, the way that the system is. To ask a student to go to school for a half a year and transfer because of parents or situations make them move and then basically tell them, hey, that half a school year that you just did is pointless. And for the schools to give me a hard time about transcripts when ultimately those grades don't count because you're not accepting the credits, I find that to be hard for him. If this child was a senior and moved here and needed those credits, and you take them away from him, how does he graduate? This is not just a school board issue here, but this is a state issue. We are so intertwined between the seven cities that this shouldn't be a problem, but it seems to be a problem. Secondly, I, as a parent, should never be told to do the legwork for, from the school to get my child registered. And it shouldn't take four or five days neither. And I shouldn't be argued with about the fact that my child doesn't show up in Portsmouth school system as ever attending, even after telling them, yes, my son attended Craddock and Norcom, which is what I got from Wilson. If they don't want to do their job, please find another. But don't lay it upon a parent to do all the legwork to get a child registered based upon the education, the paperwork I got from Cox. And I did ask for information from the school board on insurance issues as far as transporting kids. We had this discussion last year, being able to get kids to and from activities. Private vehicles if, can't, it can't happen through a school system. And I did not receive that information. Other than that, that's all I have for you. Again, welcome to Portsmouth School Board.
Okay, I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy if he would take that. And as you're well aware, he's new here. So I see him taking notes. And I'm calling Ms. Williams in the meantime. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford, and welcome back, Mr. Muttlow, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I remember you well, and we're glad to have you back. Because I know your son was the one that was so involved with the robotics, and he blossomed and he loved it. So I just wanted to welcome you back and hope the experience will turn out okay for you. And Chairman Bridgeford had already said what I was going to suggest, that you talk with Dr. Bracy.
Okay. All right, and I'm going to ask you to give, well, Dr. Bracy, you can ask him who to give the name and the phone number to, and he can get in touch with you. Make arrangements for the final what's going on, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much for coming down.
One more thing. I moved back to Virginia, from Virginia Beach for my son back to Portsmouth. You guys are the only ones in this area that offers the scholarship program for, for your seniors. And that's a driving force that brings people, for me back, looking for my son's education. So keep up that work, please.
Okay, thank you. We'll try to make sure we don't drop it. Madam Clerk?
Honorable School Board, just this past February, I was involved in a robotics, was supposed to be going to a robotics competition, but that had got, our charter bus had gotten canceled for bad road conditions. But the road wasn't all iced over and everything all the way to where it was supposed to be held in Dawswell, Virginia. So you also ruined somebody's chance to go to Worlds Competition because one of my, my team member is a senior, and this was his last chance to go, and you pretty much ruined it. So, yeah.
If it's doing snow, we had to.
I'm pretty much done. And I welcome Dr. Eli Bracy to this school board.
Okay, thank you. But if I remember correctly, this was during when it was snowing, correct? And we erred in, on the part of safety. We consider safety at the top of our list, and I think that was during the snows that we had. And I heard something about it, and I think we erred in favor of safety.
But.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
My only thing is, is that the roads were not iced, the roads, the main roads, the high-rays, even the roads going to Wilson High School were not iced over. So there should not have been an issue.
Thank you very much.
Good evening to our new superintendent, Dr. Eli Bracy, to our esteemed school board members, and to the guests who are in our audience this evening. My name is Latisha Thornton. I've been an educator in Portsmouth Public Schools for eighteen years, six of those years which I have spent at IC Norcom High School. I am currently a CTE teacher, marketing teacher, as well as a co-deca advisor. I am here this evening with one of our deca officers, Shane Bach, who will speak briefly about our deca chapter.
Good evening. My name is Shane Bach, and I am the treasurer of the IC Norcom High School Chapter of DECA. This past December, I had the opportunity, along with nineteen of my fellow DECA members, to represent my chapter at the annual district leadership conference. In terms of competition, there are a number of different events that you can compete in. And although they all differ in their own way, they share the same amount of hard work and dedication it takes to come out on top. From the district competition, seven others and myself attended the state leadership conference, which was held in Virginia Beach from February 27th to March 1st. On behalf of our DECA chapter, I am pleased to announce that five of us qualified to attend the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida, being held from April 24th to the 29th. For the first time in over a decade, we will be representing IC Norcom High School on the national level by attending the Ignite and the Thrive Academies. By attending ICDC this year, we will be, we would be showing what hard work can do and what, and would motivate students to work towards this incredible goal year after year. While we have began several fundraisers, I am here to request your financial assistance in addition to us asking for support from city council, the PTA Association, the Alumni Association, local churches, and other community supporters. Our expense is $4,202, which must be paid by March 27th. Informational packets were delivered to the school board office last Thursday, and we look forward to hearing from you individually or as a group. We have additional donation forms for any members of the audience that would like to help us as well. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Budget season is here. There's been a lot of discussion on the needs of the students, teachers, personnel, administration, and the whole Portsmouth Public School Division system. I created a leadership map of our elected and imported, appointed school board members, as well as the appointed members of the Public School Division, to identify what Portsmouth' program of general education looks like. Because Principal of Liberty 23 states that a free society cannot survive as a republic without a broad program of general education. The English colonists undertook the education of the whole people. The colonists had a sense of manifest destiny, which led them to believe that they must prepare themselves for an important role in the unfolding of modern world history. Free public grammar school was set up to teach the fundamentals of reading, writing, arithmetic, history, geography, and Bible study. The colonists believed that liberty could not be preserved without general knowledge among the people. They had a right, a divine right, that most dreaded and envied kind of knowledge, to choose their rulers. The people would be entitled to exercise the right of voting for public officers that God commands us to use for rulers, just men who will rule in the fear of God. The preservation of our republican government depends on the faithful discharge of this duty. If we, the people, neglect our duty and place unprincipled men in office, the government will soon be corrupted. Laws will be made not for the public good, but for selfish or local purposes. Corrupt or incompetent men will be appointed to execute the laws. The public revenues will be squandered on unworthy men, and the rights of the citizens will be violated or disregarded. If a republican government fails to secure public prosperity and happiness, it must be because the citizens neglect the divine commands and elect bad men to make and administer these laws. Scheming men can never be safely trusted. Our school system has failed to secure public prosperity and happiness. As you review the leadership map, you will notice the reasons why. The first issue is the communication line is broken. The second, top-heavy administration. The third, we have.
Ms. Si, you have thirty seconds left.
Okay, disregard the fundamental curriculum and instruction. And lastly, the Bible study is no longer at the schools. Thanks for listening. And I would like a bell or something. Being told when to stop is inappropriate.
I said you had thirty seconds, and you also can request more time if needed. It's up to the board to give you that. Thank you.
How do I request?
Mr. Parrott?
I don't, I mean, I don't have a question, a question from Mrs. Si, but I do wanted to ask, and I meant to before Mrs. Si cut up. Ms. Thornton and Mr. Brock, you said that it's going to cost, I think, $4,000. Is that the total amount to take the students to Orlando? Is that correct?
It is, it is our projected.
Would you, yeah, that would be, yeah. I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to get to my.
Shane talks so fast. It is our projected amount. We do have to pay for registration, hotel expenses, flight accommodations, what else do we have to take care of? But anyway, our invoice that was in your packet, it did state $4,202 some odd cents. That did not even include flight accommodations, meals, and things of that sort. But we wanted to at least provide you all with something that was tangible so that you could see what our expenses are. It costs roughly about $13.17 per student. Our CTE office does handle a portion of that, but it's a very small portion. So our goal is to raise at least $600 per student.
And how much have you raised today?
Our first check came in yesterday, which was $400. I have some individuals, faculty members, and community supporters that have pledged, but our first check came in yesterday, $400.
You know, Dr. Bracy, we do a lot for our sports. And I would, I'm not sure about how we could help these students, but Norcom is going to represent our school system and our city in this national contest. I was wondering if there's a way that we could look at any funding that we possibly could help the students, along with, you know, with our own contributions to that. I'm just, I mean, I think it's a shame that the Virginia Pilot is not here to capture some of this great things that we're doing in Portsmouth. And it's just a shame that you've got to have, you've got a deadline of March 27th. So if you don't submit this funds March 27th, that means you're not going. Is that correct?
I would like to think that that probably wouldn't be the case.
Sure.
Because we are doing our own personal fundraising.
Right.
We have scratch cards, we're selling fruit snacks. But our goal is to get them there because it's been over a decade since DECA has represented at the national level. So it may have to come out of our pockets, parents' pockets, but that's why we were here soliciting financial assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just wanted to say I agree with that proposal to see if we could fund the students for DECA. But I also wanted to make a comment about the statement that was read by Mrs. Si. When she referenced the English colonists undertook the education of the whole people, they certainly did not. Because as we know, in American history, that African-Americans were enslaved, and they certainly were not granted an education under that system. And after the period of slavery, there was a separate and unequal educational system in America. Neither were Native Americans granted education under the system of the English colonists during the period in which they ruled. And also manifest destiny, while it may have prepared them in their minds for an important role, certainly did destroy the lives of many, including African-Americans and Native Americans in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Lamb?
Yes, I had a question for Ms. Thornton and Mr. Brock. Besides, you said that you had cards, donation cards and so forth. Do you have, besides those cards and those that are here, do you have contact information towards, say, the general public? Say if they wanted to make contact with someone to help in this endeavor? Is there a number or something that people can reach you at or reach someone at?
Sir, if anybody would like to take.
Excuse me. You want to come to the mic?
That way people at home could hear this as well.
Okay. If anybody would like to have my information, my name is Latisha, L-A-T-E-S-H-A, last name Thornton, T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N. My co-advisor is Tiffany Chapel, T-I-F-F-A-N-Y, C-H-A-P-P-E-L-L. Our school number is 757-393-5444. Our school number is seven-five-seven-three-nine-three-five-four-four-two. Again, we are teachers and co-advisors at IC Norcom High School, so if anybody would like to contribute, Shane did bring some extra forms tonight. Just to give you an example of what we're doing, we have our scratch cards. You scratch two, and whatever the amount is, between fifty cents and three dollars, that goes to the child. These books cost $20, and the profit is eighty, so there's a total of $100 for this book. So this is one of our fundraisers. We have sold over 110 boxes of fruit snacks. It yields a $15 profit, so we are really, really trying, and we've been doing this since September because we do a lot of field trips with our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I just want to congratulate IC Norcom's DECA team, and I certainly will contribute to this because I think the students need to go. They haven't been in a decade, and this is quite an honor, so I concur with the other board members. If we can find some money to help them, I think that would be great. And I'll see you if you have a form. I can get one after the meeting.
Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Bridgeford. Ms. Thornton, I believe the day that I visited Norcom, I think you shared with me that you would be coming to bring this information to us about this opportunity that you thought the students would have. So, we will definitely take a look at this to see what we can do for the students to definitely attend this trip. I think it will be very enlightening for them to go, as well as good exposure on the international level, and I'm pretty sure, and I'm confident that they will represent us well. So, we will do everything that we can to do it. So, Mr. Steele, you hear that? So, you can go ahead and start looking, and we'll have a conversation soon about this.
Ms. Brenda Thompson?
Hi, my name is Brenda Thompson, and I live at four-one-one Greenwood Drive.
Could you speak into the mic so we can make sure it's recorded?
This is not a problem. You and I have a nice, healthy divorce.
Okay.
Anyway, again, my name is Brenda Thompson, and I'm coming here to the school board about transportation. I've had an ongoing chronic problem getting my daughter to school. She is a student at Churchland High School. I've talked to, even talked to Dr. Becker on a couple of occasions, and one which the school bus driver is chronically late or chronically causing sick, and one thing that resolved in my daughter being late for SOL. And again, as I told Dr. Beck talk, it was a couple of weeks before I was, I knew that she was allowed to take that SOL, about twenty minutes late. I've talked to transportation many, many, many times. They do open at six-thirty. They never return my calls. I had several conversations with Mr. Lamb there. The average I have to take my daughter to school, to Churchland, is three to five times a month, and this has been going on for months. Her dad calls, I call, I take her to school. I don't know how to resolve this. I'm coming to you because I am at a loss and I, I, Kirsten, we live in, we live in, off of Greenwood, so my daughter goes, she's out of route. She's in theater. She was in Lake Taylor. She won a art, and she has a U.S. poster stamp. She's very talented. My daughter actually broke down and cried because the transportation problem has been so big. And I know everybody is aware of the massive callouts. I again ask them, what is their callout time? What procedure do you have? Why does she have to stand on a corner? A sixteen-year-old child by herself, away from her home. Why can't you pick her up in front of the house and not have her on the corner? And she's been going to Churchland since she was a freshman. It has never been a problem until this year. I know there's issues with transportation, but how can you guys get a grip on it? How many times do they have to call in? Because I can tell you right now, unfortunately, my phone is in the dump. I threw it in the trash can, it's in the landfill. So I had things on my phone, the schedules and dates. She called out, called out, called out. I can tell you now, it's been at least fifteen times in a year, at least. And again, I take her to school three to five times a month. What is the resolution?
Mrs. Williams?
Chairman Bridgeford, that is definitely a personnel issue that needs to be addressed with Dr. Bracy and the Director of Transportation. And we do have a new superintendent on board, and he has assured us that he will address these problems, so that we don't, so you don't have to come back and you don't have to worry about it. Because if you have the documentation of how many times you've had to go through this, this issue has to be resolved.
And there again, there again, unfortunately, my, the phone that I had, it had all my data on it. I was a little upset, and I actually threw it in the trash can. It is in the landfill. I do have a replacement phone.
But that's okay. You basically can give us the background data-
Right.
-and Dr. Bracy will get with you.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
We can't resolve it here, but he certainly can.
I know.
And thank you for coming to share that.
You know, I just didn't have any other format because it was never resolved, and as I said, I do call, I do leave messages, and I have to call several times because it's never returned. The supervisor, the, it's just on and on and on. There's no resolution. And I even spoke on safety, and I was told by a manager there that, yes, she sends her child out to school. I say, is your child the only one that stands on a corner because she's out of route? She said, she told me, well, if he's there, if he's the only kid, I said, no, you don't understand. She's out there on a street corner at six o'clock in the morning, and the bus driver made sure at six-thirty.
We'll get it straight.
If you would, please make sure that Mr. Wiggins has your contact information.
Mr. Mark Yotrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the school board, and fellow citizens. I want to talk about transparency from a couple of different aspects. The first aspect has to do with making information available to the public. In conjunction with the items on the agenda, city council always has background information posted prior to city council meetings. The exhibits that you show on the screen, the documents that you pass around, to me, these are items of information that the public should have access to, and it should be available on your website. I know I can come in and FOIA everything that is not exempt from the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, but that is quite time-consuming, and I don't feel it's necessary for routine items. So I would like to see you going forward post substantiating documentation that is made available to the members of the board but is not exempt from the Freedom of Information Act with the agenda online. Secondly, the portion of your meeting, of your meetings that is taken up by comments from the public is a relatively small percentage of the time that you are here. I believe that citizens who come before you should have the same five minutes that those who come before city council have, rather than three minutes. If you're dealing with a complicated issue and you are trying to present a reasoned argument, it is very difficult to shoehorn that into three minutes. It may be difficult to shoehorn it into five minutes, depending on the complexity, but there's more breathing room in attempting to do so. The other item in terms of transparency that I would like to ask you for is when you put together a budget, I would ask that you put together a budget of needs, not a budget that you think you might be able to get through city council. This might seem to you an exercise in futility, but I think it's important that the citizens know the full list of needs that the schools have. So when you ask for an increase, say, in teacher salaries or salaries generally, they recognize that this is just the tip of the iceberg. I don't believe that anybody in city council or any member of the public really understands the dimensions of the unmet fiscal needs for the schools, and it would be a service to all of us if you would provide that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Parent?
Thank you for, Mr. Petros, would you come back to the podium, please? The budget that we, I think that you were at the joint meeting when the school board presented its budget to city council. You were not. Well, at that meeting, we presented all of our needs, and years past, we have presented must fund, and then we've presented our priorities, including the SOQ. This year, we decided as a board that we were going to present the needs, all of our needs, what you talked about, because in the Constitution of Virginia, it says that it is the local school board's responsibility to request from the local governing body funds for a high-quality education. So as a board, we said, we're going to present our list, and it was, if you want to take it, it was not a, it was a list of all the must fund that we have to do, but it was also a list of years past of what we've been asking. We decided to ask for everything. So I wanted to make that clear to you that, I don't, I didn't know that you were not there, but since you weren't there, the budget that we have prepared and that we are presenting is a budget that is very realistic, and it is a budget that speaks to the needs of the school, school division. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. I was returning from a memorial service the night of that meeting, so I did not have a chance to see that yet.
I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Thank you for anticipating my request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Mark Yotrowski, it's always good to see you. He has always been a good friend of the school board, but he tells us exactly what it is we need to do, and we try to do it. And I agree, and the board members certainly can vote on it, but the five-minute thing, I have no problem with that allowing people five minutes. And I was a little bit confused about when you were saying, put everything on the website, because it's a tremendous amount of information. And I know when I go to city council, I pick up the ordinances or whatever they list out, but it's no, no background information that we get. They will put in the paper about the agenda items, what they're going to vote on, what they're going to discuss, and when I pick up the information when I come, it's just a list of what resolutions. We have some regular council attendees here. Welcome, Ms. Alvara Johnson, Wilson Wardley, Ms. Cantrell Devon. They're there all the time. Ms. Si, and Mark, and you. So, and you, so I've never seen the sheet with the background information that you're talking about.
They don't print it. They post it on the web. There are links. When you go to the agenda on the website, there are links, and when you open the links, that gives you the background documentation.
Everything that's on their agenda?
It's beyond that.
Oh, okay.
There's actually an executive brief on many items-
Oh.
...and an ordinance behind it.
Okay. Okay, well, certainly we can, I would recommend that we look at that, how the city does it, and maybe we can certainly do that.
Improve on it.
That's right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Next slide, I'm going to agenda foot.
Does she have another speaking? Ms. Katie Vincent?
Good evening. You could have kind of skipped me, but okay. Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chair Parent, Dr. Bracy, and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity tonight. My name is Katie Vincent, President of Portsmouth Education Association. I am here tonight to invite you to join PEA, the Virginia Education Association, and Virginia PTA, in a campaign that deserves your support. It's a campaign that aims to support our students and provide them with the opportunity to realize their dreams to become Virginia next-generation leaders. Think about the last time you were invited to a kindergarten classroom. When you looked into the faces of the kindergarten students, you see the smiling eyes and the eagerness to learn and underscore the promise of their child. They have dreams about what they will become, and their hopes burn bright. They will be, they'll be in school for the next twelve years, hopefully in Virginia and even here in Portsmouth. Virginia ranks the tenth wealthiest state in the country, but we're the lowly thirty-ninth among all state per pupil state funding. Since the Great Recession, beginning in two thousand eight, the state has cut education funding by seventeen percent, and we've had five thousand education job cuts. Even though student enrollment has gone up, the board has seen the results right here. We cut position, we increased class sizes, we delayed purchase of supplies and durable goods. We haven't been able to provide competitive salaries to our employees. We can't allow this to go on, and that's why the Virginia Education Association and Virginia Parent-Teacher Association have joined together to campaign, Put Kids First. We believe that the Commonwealth has the capacity and the knowledge to truly transform the lives of our children by ensuring that every child has access to high-quality public education from preschool to graduation. What's stopping us? We know how subsequently improved the lives of Virginia children, but our decision has not shown and will make it happen. We have not demanded enough from our elected leaders or from ourselves. That must change. If we invest now in the education of Virginia students, we will help every child reach his or her full potential. We will increase the number of graduates ready to begin high-quality careers, Virginia New Economy, and we will reduce the human financial costs associated with school failure and dropouts. I'm asking this board to support the effort. I provide, I have a copy of a resolution for you to support our statewide campaign. I also invite you to join us on April the eighteenth in Richmond, a free field trip on a charter bus to go to Richmond, to rally with us to put kids first. I have a proclamation that I give you, Mr. Bridgeford, for your members, and hopefully you'll sign it. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you have a flyer, or could you give us information of, on the April eighteenth, when that free field trip is going to Richmond?
I have it right here. This is for you all, and I have your proclamation.
Okay, thank you.
I'm used to city council, somebody sitting there, so I'll take it this way. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak for the board at this time.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda, number nine for discussion, monthly report, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Helen W. Taylor, Senior Director, Dr. Bracy.
Yes. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Mr. Bridgeford, Vice Chair Parent, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
You have the report from the Department of Curriculum and Instruction for the month of February...I'm going to say February, but please note that it is for the month of March, but these are our minutes and our information up to this point. You will also find that we have the copies of the minutes of the meetings that were held with our two schools' governance, primarily IC Norcom, and then, of course, at the local level, Craddock Middle School. I'd like to call your attention to the arts. If you will note that the Southeast Region Scholastic Art Awards were announced on February 3rd, and Churchillum High School had several recipients. Sufjan Shamlee won a gold key for his entire drawing portfolio, and I'm just going to call the names if it's okay. Javon Myrtle won a gold key for his multicolor linoleum block print. Skyle Owens received a silver key for her multicolor block print. And Israel Garrario received a silver key for his multicolor block print. The only thing that I did not read, as you can well note, would be the name of the actual piece of art. Continuing, if you will note, our 4th graders are now taking advantage of the field trip to the Museum of Contemporary Art in Virginia Beach, and each elementary school will have a tour of the town of the current exhibition, which will allow our students to have a hands-on activity. All of our elementary schools are currently working with the Portsmouth Annual Shelter on a project to highlight the important work done by the shelter in our city. The students are learning about the work of the shelter, studying the anatomy of animals and drawing animal pictures, portraits. Exhibits will be hung in all schools, and the students are invited to participate in a community day at the shelter. The last thing that I have under the arts is Youth Art Month begins March 1st, so look for the artwork of Portsmouth Public Schools students hung on the windows of our businesses along High Street. Due to the inclement weather, the writing SOL test was not canceled, but it was definitely changed, and instead of having started on March 2nd, we will now begin on March 16th. Again, we will only be testing grades 8 and 11 because the state of Virginia removed the SOL 5th-grade writing test. And that's where many of you have heard us talk about the alternative assessments that we currently work with to make sure that our students are still gaining English skills so that when they get to the 8th grade, needless to say, the 11th grade, they will have the skills that are necessary to pass. In math, again, this year, the Math Day Partnership with Portsmouth Public Schools and the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame continued. It involved the museum's staff members presenting activities that allowed the students to get up and move and supporting the standards of learning. And yes, Hodges Manor Elementary School was taped by the Hampton Road Show, and it was aired, which has passed, on February 24th. Our annual SEM Expo will occur on March 28, 2015, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and I know they are busily getting ready, and this activity will be held at Woodrow Wilson High School. Portsmouth Public Schools has received another grant from the James Town-Yorktown Foundation Outreach Program, and it will provide our classroom visitations by the staff members from the outreach program prior to the SOL test. So that should be very helpful. Portsmouth Public Schools will be participating in the Clinical Faculty Training Grant awarded to Norfolk State University School of Education, and we have three participants. We have Tamika Bryce from IC Norcom, Danita Easton Bottoms from Parkview Elementary, and Sharon Dennis from Douglas Park Elementary School. To call your attention again to the alternative assessments that I mentioned to you earlier, that the region had applied for a grant, and we were awarded that grant, wherein we are going to have our first professional learning opportunity. I believe it's on March 16th, and one of our board members, Mrs. Sarah Duncan-Hines, will be participating in that. But that's the region, including all of our Hampton area schools, and we have eight participants from our Portsmouth Public Schools to be attending. They let us know that we have seats for eight, which would consist of administrators as well as our teachers. So we're very thrilled to have teachers given the opportunity to participate in that. Professional development activities, I mention that because, as you know, it is on the website where we send out the activities of professional development that we have offered through the city, and we had to go back and revise it again because of the inclement weather, so that's been completed. And finally, I'd like to say that even though we have been out for several days of inclement weather, the Department of Curriculum and Instruction will continue to work very closely with the schools to make sure that the academic momentum is there to ensure that our students will certainly continue to make academic success. That concludes our report for this evening, and are there any questions?
Mr. Parent?
Thank you, Doc.
Taylor?
Having not had a lot of time to review the second benchmark test and having read both the Craddock Middle and the Norcom Governance Report, I'm looking at Craddock Middle's scores for 7th-grade math and 8th-grade math, and Algebra I and Geometry. I mean, and also in your report, you're talking about making sure...I mean, the principal and you are talking about making sure that the blueprint updates, that teachers have access and are reviewing that. This is the second nine weeks, and then I'm looking at the scores at Norcom High School in mathematics, and I'm just...I guess I'm just sounding an alarm that maybe there is...I mean, I realize this is the second nine weeks, but May's coming. I keep saying May's coming, and when you look at Algebra I, as compared, it was 60% and Algebra II was 96.2%, and then Geometry was 60%. My concern with these two reports is that although you're meeting and that you're discussing this, I mean, these are the...I mean, this is just kind of an indicator telling us where we are, telling, you know, letting the board know where we are. Hopefully, these scores are going to...and Dr. Nichols, is she...
She's there.
Are we...tell me that these scores are going to improve, please.
And one of the things...
I realize that this is the second nine weeks, and we're going...I mean, second, but these scores alarm me at this point.
And what we need to look at, we're looking at the average scores.
That's correct.
And for the past three years, what I have done, I have correlated our benchmark scores with SOL scores since the new test began.
Right.
And we find that when our students are scoring within about 60% and higher, they are passing the SOL.
Okay.
So we can use our benchmarks at 60% as a predictor
Okay.
of passing the SOL test. So when you look at that, we are not that far away, and they have been moving forward. We've been monitoring in two-week assessments at the middle schools. And also, when you look at these numbers, also looking at the number of students enrolled in each of those classes, too, because that's definitely where we are. I'm, you know, in working with the teachers, identifying what is 70...you know, who are the 70% of your students that...I mean, we are very surgically attacking this, and I do feel that they are going to be there, and if you did look at Norcom's SOL scores, we are almost at 70%. I mean, it's 60 overall for first semester, which we will be well on our way in May.
Okay.
And so we are...and I have support two days a week from my team at each middle school, because that's really where our biggest need is at the middle school, and that's where we are focusing.
Right. And Dr. Taylor, it says, "English is to find tutors to work with students scoring below 70%." How many students are we talking about? And where...are these tutors...are we going to pay them or volunteers? Because it says, "English to find tutors." Tutors, I mean, where...that score...how many students scored below 70%?
Without having that report, let me say...
It's not this one?
Not...yes.
Right.
Let me say this, as far as the tutors are concerned, one of our program specialists moved to California, and we had to get someone in there to work with those tutors. We have now hired one for the...for each one of the middle schools, and we're looking at another one for the third middle school. And what we do is ask the principals to give us the number of days that those persons can work for us, because they're part-time. And as a result of that, they come in on their schedule. They work at least, I would say, four hours a day and maybe two to three times per week. And these are the students who have scored less than the 75%, and we're trying to get them there.
Right. The other thing is that how are the tutors paid? Is this SOL remediation funds, or is it our...
At the elementary level, it would be SOL remediation funds. At the middle and high school level, that comes out of the budget that is given from Mr. Steele's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. Just two questions. First one, you mentioned about the training for the assessments and so forth, but what assessments? What are we looking at?
Oh, the English, the science, and the social studies, not mathematics.
Right. But I mean, what are...when we say assessments, what are we looking...are we looking at portfolios? Are we looking at...what exactly is the...what is the assessment?
We are just beginning the process within the Hampton Roads area, and that's why we are going to the meeting on Monday to begin to look at the process across the area, to see how best we can meet the needs of our students in our schools. Now, in this, in Portsmouth, we have also had some workshops in which the teachers have been attending to go back into the schools to help make assessments that will help the students cover some of the skills, many of the skills that they will need before they move to the next grade. For example, the 5th graders, who will not be taking the test, will be going to the 6th grade, 7th grade, but at the 8th grade, they will be taking that test. So all during those four years, they will have an opportunity to take an assessment that will be appropriate, that is aligned with the standards of learning. But it takes a while to develop those assessments.
So let me see if I'm understanding this correctly. So when you're saying assessments or what's being used here, again, we're not talking about portfolios. You're saying that this could be even just a test?
A portfolio.
A unit, or what?
Excuse me. A portfolio can be a form of an assessment.
Right.
But it is determined, as a matter of fact, from our department as to what we see appropriate to help them to get along. That's why we're going to be participating in the regional workshop on Monday to make sure that we are consistent with the other areas. It can also be a teacher-made assessment.
And we're going to this workshop for Hampton Roads and so forth. I could be wrong, but what...didn't assessments, the alternative assessment, wasn't that supposed to kick in for this spring?
And we are, Mr. Lamb, what we are doing is, we do not have anything...we didn't have anything from day one to use. The state gave us an opportunity to begin to look at a process and to begin to look at some type of assessments that we can use this year.
Right.
So that we will not lose a year of getting our students ready to move to the next grade.
I guess we're in March.
Yes, we are.
And we've been talking about the alternative assessments from day one for this year, and the General Assembly passed it last year. But we're talking about going to a training and so forth, and here we are in the middle of March concerning what assessment are we going to use? We don't know what the assessment we're going to use yet?
Oh, no, that is not...no, I'm sorry.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What form, what vehicle, what avenue are we using as the assessment?
What we're using now is what the schools...excuse me. You want to answer that? Okay. Ms. Nottingham?
With respect to the alternative assessments, the state has passed all of that, but there's a lot of latitude as to when divisions actually start that. It's really an optional situation the first year. They just want to make sure that what we have in place, and it can be a benchmark that we already use it, what we have in place, that we're complying with the standards of learning and that the kids are not losing that information because we're not testing.
So are we going to use a benchmark?
That's what we are meeting for, to decide all of those things, as well as the median in which we're going to test.
When is the soonest that...after we have this Hampton Roads meeting and so forth, when is the soonest that we're going to find out what the form of alternative assessment
That meeting that we are having on Monday is not to roll out a test for us to use. In August, our teachers were informed, for the non-tested grades, that they were to continue to teach those skills and use teacher-made assessments as they went through the year to make sure that they were still...that they were still learning those skills. As far as something that's been rolled out and said, "This is what you're going to use," that is not there, Mr. Lamb.
Okay. And then my second question, because I've been thinking about this for a little bit of time now. When was the last time that we had a district-wide curriculum audit? How many years has that been?
I believe that has been at least...at least 10 years ago. I'm going to turn and look at my team. Has it been at least 10 or more? Did you say 5, 10, 15? Or did you say 20?
15 years? What is...I guess, for districts, when they have curriculum audits and so forth, what is the average length that you would...say you have...you do a district audit in 2005. Is that audit good for five years, three years, 10 years? I mean, when do you go back and redo an audit? Because, I mean, to me, in 15 years, that seems to...I mean, a lot has changed in 15 years. And I'm wondering, and I'm just thinking, and based upon what I'm hearing on numbers and so forth with the benchmark numbers and whatnot, I'm wondering, how closely is the curriculum being aligned with what we're trying to objectively do, and that is to get accreditation by a test? Now, I don't like teaching to a test, and I'm not saying that at all, but if our curriculum...if there's gaps or holes in the curriculum, how are we going to know that if we haven't had one in 15 years?
The curriculum is...
Dr. Taylor, hold on just a minute. Dr. Bracy wants to say something.
Mr. Lamb, the question you just raised about the curriculum audit, that's something that I'm going to have done immediately. We were in our...we were in the training this morning with the refresher for the MWBE, and that was one of the things I asked as far as putting that out there to get someone in to provide that type of assessment for us, because coming in to the new division, that's something that I want to have so that they can provide me with an unbiased opinion of where we are curriculum-wise. So that's something that... So that's something that, that Dr. Taylor probably, we've discussed it, but she doesn't know any of the details of it. That's something that I want, that I need, as I assess where we are curriculum-wise. And I was waiting, trying to wait to see the timeline when the, the new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction will be coming on board, because I wanted him or her to also have some input with it. But I'm going to go ahead and, and start that process so that I can get that part out of the way. And to answer the second question, usually, the state is usually changing the curriculum three to five years. So, the audits would take place during that time to see what adjustments we would need to make, as far as when you would do another one.
That's what they should, yeah. Good. And I'm glad to hear, Dr. Bracy, that this is being moved up as foremost item to do a priority, because-
It's urgent.
Because it is urgent. I mean, what, where we are right now with, as we're all aware, with full accreditation of some schools, and as Mr. Parent has even said with the numbers, and I just was able to glance at it, there is a concern with where things are at this time. So, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Reverend Pateloff?
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Taylor, before I came on board, was there ever a plan presented to the board as far as how you plan to tackle the issues with the schools not being accredited? Academic plan put in place? And more so, I've been visiting a few schools, and our teachers and administrators are working very hard. But I do have a question. Is there a schedule in place for, let's say, our program specialists, as far as how often they go to schools to lend the support to our teachers that they may need in the classroom?
Okay, yes, there is a school improvement plan process. Each year, each school does a, a school improvement plan. Actually, it's a three-year plan. And within that plan, they have a goal. They look at their strengths, as well as their weaknesses. Then they come up with a plan of action as how they believe they can get to the passing mark. It talks about the standard. It talks about the amount of money that's needed to do it, the persons who are responsible for making sure that it happens. And then we meet during the year to see how they are progressing with their plan. So, yes, to answer that part of your question, there is a school improvement plan process in place. And we have had members of our board to come in and listen to the reviews that are done by the principals, along with the instructional teams from each building. So we do have a plan in place. We also look at the data to determine the strengths and the weaknesses of each school. And as we look at those strengths, and the weaknesses primarily, that is when we begin to offer curriculum and instructional support. You ask about how often do the program specialists go into the schools? Each school is given a program specialist, and I'll refer to English, for example. We have 13 elementary schools. We have three middle, as you know, and three high schools, as well as the alternative school. In the area of English, we have four program specialists. One at the high school level, one at the middle school, who is no longer here, who is now in California, that we just hired the tutors for, to go in and to help. And then, of course, in the elementary schools, we currently have three. Those three persons normally are assigned to the schools who have the greatest needs. The schools who are most successful are not the persons who get the most attention from our program specialist. And that is done throughout the content areas. Each, each content area has X number of specialists, and we look at the weaknesses of the schools, and then we assign the personnel to go out into those schools. Then we meet with the program specialist on a bi-monthly or sometimes weekly basis to see what concerns they have come up with. And then we also revise where our people are going to make sure that we are in the schools of greatest need. We also organize something that we call our blitzes, where CNI people, the directors, are going into the schools, working with the teachers, looking at what they're doing, talking with the principals to make sure that if we see areas that we can improve, we do that. In addition to that, the program specialists offer professional development to every school that's in the district. It's open, it's free, it's after-school. They sign up, those who can and will come, come. That, again, is based on the data that we are looking at. We also, in the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, look at the data very, very closely. We even go as far as saying, "You don't, you do not need to go into School A, because School A has already met the standards, requirements to pass the SOL test." We start working with small groups of children right after the first semester. And up until the first semester, we've worked with the teaching staff, trying to help them to deliver the, to implement the program, I'm going to say, more effectively where there are needs. We work with the first-year teachers who've just come in and offer staff development. So we have a plethora of things that we do to help and support our schools as much and as often as we can.
So, so there is a, just to make sure, there is a schedule they have for the schools that go to?
Absolutely. Every, every program specialist has a schedule. And the directors monitor that schedule.
And is that available, provided also upon request?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
We'll gladly provide that to you.
Mr. Parent?
Dr. Bracy's already answered my question, because there's a, there is a difference in the, in a curriculum audit. And that's been a number of years when we have, we've had independent contractors to come in and audit our curriculum. But there is also the, the three to five years that he addressed regarding the curriculum alignment. Now, that is done, I mean, every, for example, science, mathematics, reading. I mean, if our curriculum is not aligned, and, and you still have your academic reviews, correct? I mean, the school improvement plans are presented, and then you have teams of people going into the schools, review, doing an academic, an internal academic review. And I assume that the state is working with Craddock and Norcom, and so you have those external teams coming in. So, you've got a lot of people looking at our curriculum and looking at how, how well the look for is, that I noticed here in your AARP E3, which I'm glad is not AARP, so that teachers know, when you come into the classroom, you know exactly what, what you're looking for.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Taylor. You've given us a lot of information. I, I think, as a person that, that doesn't teach education, but I'm more interested in outcomes. And if we have all these specialists that are assigned and going to all these different places they are supposed to be going to, then I have to hearken back to what one of our former board members, Dr. Mark Whitaker, would always say, that not only do we hold the teachers accountable, that we hold the directors and the specialists accountable.
Right.
Because it sounds like we have a lot of people, but we just need to know are the people doing what they need to do. And it's, sounds wonderful to lay out everything to us perfectly. And in a perfect world, all those things would be happening. But some schools, they don't see the people. I mean, this is what they tell us privately, that they very rarely come in. And it was also mentioned that if we had curriculum and, and instruction specialists, that they would be the ones to ensure that the curriculum was aligned with the testing or the state or whatever. And also that they could possibly present the lesson plans to the teachers of what they need to cover. And, because if they're not aligned, it doesn't do any good. And that's why the test scores are always part of the reason, that they're not where they should be. So, I, I know that Dr. Bracy will be looking into all of those things, but you are hearing some of the concerns that we have consistently heard, and, and we would appreciate it, and thank you for your report as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ms. Hines?
Good evening, Dr. Taylor. Thank you, Board Chair. This question may be a little bit more for Dr. Nichols. I wanted to, ARDT. Can you explain that a little bit more in detail? And how, how is that used? Because I know in different places, it's used differently. So I just want to understand what your ARDT is and how we use it here.
Yes. ARDT stands for Algebra Readiness Diagnostic Test. It is an assessment that comes from the state of Virginia and through Pearson. What this assessment will do is, it's, it's a CAT assessment, much like the, the sixth-grade test that's coming up. So it determines where the student is based on the different reporting categories. And then it will actually tell you, in this area, they may be at the third-grade level. This area, they may be at fifth, but they may be at seventh. So, this helps us to pinpoint, to fill those gaps that students may come to us with. We use this with our sixth graders, our seventh graders, our eighth graders, and Algebra I students at middle school and at high school, because that is the cap of what we're permitted to use the funding for. With the funding we receive, we are able to assign hours to the schools, so they have tutors that can come in, and again, based on those ARDT results, begin to, you know, work in small groups, again, to help fill some of those gaps. So, that's being used in all of our schools. And again, they have ample test units available to them that, you know, if they need more, all they need to do is let me know, and we can assign more to them. And especially for those, like, first semester, we use that with our Algebra I students, who are getting ready to take the Algebra I SOL test. Just again, so as you're getting closer to that test, it'll spell out where those, you know, which SOLs they have a strength in, where they're weak, so that as you're making that last push, you can really focus in on that.
So, your remediation that you do, is it all after-school? Is there any push in, there's push into the classroom?
Most of it is done during the school day. There's very little of it done after-school, because, and especially as you move to middle and high school, there are not many, you know, we don't get as many students that will stay after-school. So, whether it's maybe a small group within the classroom, as instruction's taking place, but if we know there are some students that might have gaps, well, the, the tutor will work with them during instruction, you know, to help them along as they go through. And sometimes they may, you know, pull them out, you know, for a little while, physically out of the classroom, fill in some gaps and bring them back. But, no, the majority of it does take place during the school year, so that we can re, I mean, excuse me, the school day, so that we can impact more students.
Okay, so it really is surgical, because you're drilling down to where that gap is?
Yeah, that's, that test will give them that very specific information.
And I know, Dr. Taylor, you mentioned the English depart, thank you, Dr. Nichols. I know you mentioned the English departments doing remediation as well. Can you all get a surgical with yours, with your remediation, as math does with yours?
Oh, absolutely, because we all use the, the new assessment program that we have in, Interactive Achievement Series. And it gives every content area the same results and the same possibilities of working with the weaknesses.
So your remediation group is then based on scores or based on skill?
Skills.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgford. Two questions again, and this could be for Ms. Nichols and Dr. Taylor. As far as you were talking about the volunteers, after you do the ARDT assessments and so forth, and even for English, the, the same assessments, and then you bring, you have the volunteers that come in, and they do the specific skills that, that are set for that. My question is, I could ask you the question, "Do you have enough volunteers?" Probably the answer you'll give me is no. I mean, that, that makes sense.
Well, actually, they're not volunteers. With the funding we receive from the state, we are able to pay them.
Okay.
So, they are-
And, well, then you could probably use more then, I guess.
We will take anything you'd like to do, in terms of that, Mr. Lamb.
My, my question is, based upon, based upon doing that and so forth, has there been data collected to see how effective that has been?
Yeah, there was, I don't know if you remember, we did the Algebra Readiness, because we also run a summer program, and we did a study on that, maybe seven, eight, yeah. It's been a while, but as we look at the ARDT test, because we have to give a pre-test and a post-test. So we can look at Student A, and you can see, when you print that report out, it gives you a history of when they've taken that CAT test again. So that will actually show the growth that the student has made over the course of the year.
So, since doing this program of having individuals actually tutoring or helping in those deficit skills, what you're telling me is that since doing that, you have data that shows that there has been increase in, in that?
Yes, you can pull it by individual student, and you can see by individual student. We have not pulled it all together, say, like, into a report by school, which, you know, certainly could be done. But as you're looking at individual students, you, you do focus on that individual report and the individual student growth.
And then, secondly, as, as what Ms. Williams said, and of course, with me working in a classroom and so forth, the curriculum specialists, and it was explained that, you know, they go to the schools that needs it the most, and, and they're in, in classrooms and, and whatnot. And of course, Ms. Williams had said about, maybe they are getting there, or, or maybe they're not. My question is, and maybe this is something you're going to have to look into, can you tell us, how much time do they act? Because I'm assuming that's their primary responsibility, is to be in the classrooms and helping and, and assessing and so forth. Can you give me an idea of actually how much time they're able to do that versus the other things, such as the filing the reports and the paperwork and, and so forth? For, in other words, how long are they in the office doing the, the paperwork stuff versus actually being in the classroom?
It varies. I will say this, that the majority of the time is spent in the schools with the children. For example, in a content, for one content area, they have a planning day, let's say, Monday or Tuesday. And all of the rest of the days, they are scheduled to be in the schools, and each director is responsible for making sure the program specialists are scheduled out into the schools. So if a program specialist is assigned, let's say, to Brighton Elementary, and I'll go back again to reading, then that program specialist is scheduled for that school for that entire day. And then the next day, that same program specialist will move to another school in an effort to make sure that as many of our schools as possible are covered. So I would say, four days in the schools and one day within the office to do the office-type of work, that they are responsible for taking care of.
So, so the four days, using your example, Brighton Elementary, if they're in the school for four days, so are they, are they being utilized well? Meaning, it's one thing to be at the school, you know, and still doing paperwork or assessing things like that, but are they, are they in those classrooms? Are they doing what those primary tasks are?
My response would be, yes, but I would also say to you that when they go into a school, not only do they leave a copy of what they have done with a teacher, a copy is, a duplicate of that is also given to the building principal. And each building principal should have a notebook or some type of file where he or she can go into and show you, "This is when T R, Program Specialist A, was in my building." Because there's a duplicate of what the person has done for that particular school. In addition to that, those copies are turned back in to the programs, to the directors. And we have a copy of what they have done in each of the schools. And they will indicate whether or not a teacher needs assistance in, and they offer that particular assistance. That's the monitoring piece that we have in place. But I can further look into that, Mr. Lamb, to- piece that we have in place. But I can further look into that, Mr. Lamb, to see if it is as effective as I believe it is, simply because of the information that comes back to us in the duplicate form as to where they were. But we can certainly look into that further.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Parent?
Thank you. Just one last question. Do we still, thank you, Mr. Chairman, do we still use PD 360?
Yes. That's mentioned in all of his school improvement plans, in his school improvement meeting, we use it.
And the reason I'm asking is that, yes, I've seen it, but the bottom line is that who monitors the utilization of that? Because if a teacher is weak in one particular area, the teacher can pull that particular area and she can see a demonstration of that particular skill. Who monitors, because I know that when I first, when I got on the board, I got a password and I got into some of the, some of the videos. Who is monitoring that to make sure? I know that you talked a lot about the directors, but that's a valuable tool that we, we've spent a lot of money.
Yes.
With that. And if it's not being utilized, if you don't have any data to show where it's actually being utilized, then maybe we need to, maybe we need to find out, maybe we need to find something better than that, because if teachers are utilizing it, then it's, it's just no good. It's just out there and it sounds good on a school improvement plan, but it's just not being.
That's done under the supervision of the building principals.
So the building principal is responsible for the use of, and do you get a report? Do you ask for a report?
No, we do not have a report.
So you don't know whether they're using it or not?
Other than when they present their school improvement plans and when they come in for the monitoring process and talk about the strategies that they're using.
Right.
They will mention it. That's the only process that we have, Mr. Parent, in place for that.
But Dr. Bracy, that might be one of the questions you might need to ask the principals, because if we're not using that, that tool, which we've spent thousands of dollars, and if there, if there's no way that you can be accountable, anybody can be accountable, then I just, I mean, I think we need to look at that, review that again, whether or not it's, it's a lot of money, but it's a very valuable tool, used properly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, ten, for discussion, monthly report, human resources, Mr. Christopher P. Steele, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bracy.
Mr. Steele?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Bridford, or Chairman Bridford, Vice Chairman Parent, School Board members, Dr. Bracy. The Department of Human Resources report, I'm going to give some highlights. The first item is the Teacher of the Year for 2014, 2015. The 2015 Teacher of the Year program will take place on Wednesday, March 18th, at 5:00 PM at Woodrow Wilson High. The Teacher of the Year Selection Committee has interviewed and selected a secondary and division-wide Teacher of the Year representative. To get you up to speed on some critical recruitments, the Department of Human Resources is scheduled to attend recruitment fairs at the following locations. The Career and Technical Education Fair on March 11th, yesterday, at Woodrow Wilson High School. Old Dominion University on March 16th, which was postponed from February 17th, and Christopher Newport News on April 20th. And those recruitments, the following administrative positions are being advertised internally and externally, and we've already received a number of applicants. And that includes the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, the Director of Human Resources, and the Public Information Officer. And also, we have interviews tomorrow for the Purchasing Manager Coordinator. As far as professional development, the Department of Human Resources recently participated in the following professional development activity. And in February 24th, it was employment law compliance as it applies to disciplining or terminating a worker's compensation claimant. And that ends the, my monthly report for human resources.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I was glad to see the postings for the Assistant Superintendent and for the Director of Human Resources get on the website. My question was, do we have a timeline yet for that? When do we, when are, when are applications closing? Do we have an interview window scheduled? Can we address that now, or?
Yes. I, I didn't put an end date on it. What I was saying, I was going to wait until about three weeks to get a good pool in, then I would select some for, for the interviews. But I wasn't going to close it until it was, until it was actually filled.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Steele? Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the Employee Transaction Report for February 2015. You have anything ahead on that?
No, sir. This is a request for approval of the Empowering Transaction Report for February.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving properly, second, that we approved the Employee Transaction Report as given in the discussion. If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number 11A, Consideration of Recommended Changes to the 2014-15 Calendar to Make Up for Instruction Time Lost to Closings Due to Inclement Weather. Tess, do you have this?
Yes, sir. Chairman Bridford, Vice Chair Parent, School Board members, Dr. Bracy, good evening.
Good evening.
You've been provided a matrix that indicates our current situation as a result of inclement weather, an instructional time that has been lost. That matrix also includes our recommendation for how we would like to recover that time, as indicated on the executive summary that was provided to you. We are recommending that April 2nd and April 3rd be come full days instead of early release at the high school level, as well as June 15th, which is currently scheduled to be an early release day for all students. In addition to those days, we would also like to recommend that elementary and middle schools receive an additional five minutes of instruction at the end of the school day, and that high schools receive an additional four minutes added to their school day, effective on Monday, March 16th.
All right. If there's any, unless there's any discussion, just for questions, can we get the motion, and then if it's discussion on what, are you trying to cut it off?
If you, if you prefer to go for a motion and then discussion, that would be fine.
I would like to try to go for that. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly, second, and added discussion. For the consideration of recommended changes for the makeup of school time. Mr. Lamb, you go first.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is clearly an area outside of my expertise, so help me out here, Dr. Bracy, and those of you that are more familiar with this. It's my understanding that, I guess, years ago, Portsmouth Public Schools went and they had put on an additional, something like 10 minutes at the end of the day, and years ago, and I'm not saying two or three, I'm saying like, what, five, 10 years ago, something like that?
Yes, sir.
My question is this, and again, math wasn't my forte either, but if we've added 10 minutes on the end of the school day for multiple, multiple years, wouldn't that time, does that time build up and carry over every year?
No, sir. As indicated on the matrix that was provided to you, according to Virginia Code, there is a minimum of 180 instructional days or 990 hours of instruction required per school year.
Correct.
Yes, sir. So that time does not carry over from school year to school year.
Okay. And so, according to this, the plan, we're adding five minutes each day for elementary, middle, and four minutes for high school?
Yes, sir.
Till the end of the year?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parent?
Refresh my memory. What happened 9/9/14?
There was flooding.
Flooding?
Yes, sir. And we were closed that day.
Mike, so? We were, I just thought, well, my memory just escaped me, 9/9/14, flooding. Okay, thank you. All right. Wow.
Okay. There's no other questions?
There was a big issue.
Ms. Hines?
I would just like to say thank you for having those extra minutes built in, because as it is right now, we're really only making up 300 minutes of the two basically full instructional weeks that we were out. So those extra minutes that we added on several years ago for this has paid off. I just want to make sure that these five and four extra minutes are terminated June 20th, so that these are not added on to next year in addition to our, our extra minutes that we add. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Next item is 11B.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this item is Consideration of a Resolution to Provide Spring Break Holiday Pay in the Form of a Bonus to Certain Employees. As indicated in the executive summary, on January 29th, the School Board approved funding for special one-time spring break holiday pay. Presented for your approval tonight is the Resolution to Pay the Bonus Equivalent to Five Days Base Pay to All Active Full-Time, Non-Exempt, Non-12-Month Employees. Once approved, this bonus will be paid on April 17th, 2015. And I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Portsmouth City School Board appreciates all employee contributions toward the achievement of the school division's success in educating students, and whereas the School Board does not wish to create hardships on specific employees due to gaps in their salary stream caused by spring break, and whereas on January 29th, the School Board approved funding for a special one-time spring break holiday pay, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board show its appreciation in a tangible manner to the dedicated support personnel who proudly give of themselves in an unselfish manner, and be it further resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board awards spring break pay bonuses equivalent to five days of base pay before taxes to all active, full-time, non-exempt, non-12-month employees, and be it further resolved that all eligible employees who will receive the bonuses shall be those actively employed during the week of April 6th to 10th, 2015, and be it further resolved that the bonus payment shall be issued with the April 17th, 2015 payroll and will be subject to all taxes and legal wage attachments in accordance with Section 8.01-511 of the Virginia Legal Code. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be made part of the School Board's official minutes and copies be displayed in all administrative offices and schools throughout the division.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving properly, second, that we approved the record, resolution as given in the discussion. Ms. Hines?
I do have one question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's come to my attention, we have some 12-month hourly employees as well. This resolution is only for our 10-month hourly, and I was just wondering if there was a way that we could...
They get paid, don't they?
12-month hourly get paid?
Oh, I thought they got paid.
They should get paid. Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure, because I did have a conversation with someone about 12-month hourly. So can I have some clarification? Because I don't want to leave somebody out that is without pay for two weeks or without pay for a week.
Yes, ma'am. All 12-month employees, non-exempt and exempt, are currently paid for holidays already. So the 12-month hourly person that you, you're referencing will receive pay for spring break already.
I needed clarification.
Certainly.
They get it.
Okay. See, no more cues. Board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Parent?
Is there a way tomorrow, Dr. Bracy, that this information can go forth, and everybody in the schools will know that this is going to occur? I think this is a positive thing for our employees, and is there a way that we can get this out?
Yes.
Tomorrow, through email, whatever.
Mr. Wiggins, probably, send out a memo.
Yes.
Yes. I think it'd be very positive. You'll hear a lot of cheers tomorrow.
Does that also include spring break, make-up time? Because I'm sure we have parents and teachers that want to make sure their plans for spring break are intact.
Okay, monthly report, budget and planning, Mr. Steele, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bracy.
Steele?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Budget and Planning Monthly Report, I've included some highlights before I that, before I start that. I'd just like to remind everybody of some key dates coming up as it regards, or in regard to the budget. On 19 March, there's going to be a public hearing again on the budget. On 26 March, the budget will be on the School Board Agenda for Approval, and that is the budget that will go to the city. On 30 March, the City Manager will be presenting the city's budget. And then, of course, later dates, the city will have its own public hearings, and also there'll be an approval of the final budget by City Council in May. A couple of highlights, computer replacement project, which was a fairly big project. The Office of Information Technology successfully completed the replacement of 4,217 computers division-wide, with new desktops running Windows 7 operating system and Microsoft Office 2013 productivity suit, which includes Word, Excel, PowerPoint, et cetera. In all cases, the work to replace the equipment occurred on days when school was not in session or after students had left for the day. I'd also like to mention one other IT project that came up at a public comment this evening, and one had to do with transparency of board documents. We did recently sign an agreement with VSBA to implement Board Docs Lite, and that will include a lot of the features that were discussed about providing those documents readily to the public as they're, as they're displayed. Snow update, some of you may recall we had a couple days of snow. There were a number of leaks and damages that were discovered, and they're, they're listed in your, in this summary. In all emergency situations, plumbers and operations staff were dispatched to resolve the issues, and I commend the operations and emerg, and staff to keep the schools running and fixing those leaks and, and other things to get them repaired for school. And we'll continue to monitor those leaks that may have a longer-term issue. The Wilson High School fire alarm was one of the CIP projects that we started in January, and it was awarded to Life Safety Solutions Integrators. A meeting was held with operations staff and city staff at the end of January to discuss topics related to the implementation of the project and the roles respectively between the city and the schools, and how the inspection and final certification will go. The construction period of 120 consecutive days to reach substantial completion, again, the, the, the construction period is, was between February 9th and June 9th. Some of the snow days may, may have affected that. A pre-construction meeting was held on February 9th, and the contractors began starting, began moving material and starting the rough-in installation process of electrical boxes. And tomorrow, we're going to have the first progress meeting and talk about the, the progress and the progress payments. And of course, you know, big construction projects, we have progress payments, and if they meet certain milestones, we pay those progress An item on crossing guard training, we are working with the city police department in providing not only additional, but we are going to try to ingrate it into our constant training plan for crossing guards. So that'll be part of the overall training plan for crossing guards, for both new crossing guards, but also for refresher training. I've already talked about the purchasing manager, and the interviews were canceled a couple times because of snow. a couple of times because of snow, but I don't think there's snow tomorrow, so we should be good to go. Status of some current procurements, we are putting together a request for quotes for replacement of musical equipment. There is an item on the painting contract later on the agenda. The pay and compensation comparison study, we're putting together a request for proposal there, and we hope to present that to our transformation consultants to look for MWBE input, and then look to release that. We don't have a date yet for that, though. The last table is a table we periodically update that shows the status of ordinances and school board requests that require some action on the city, and those are summarized there, and there's an action tonight for a categorical adjustment and increase in appropriation later on in the agenda. And that ends my monthly report.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I think it was actually left over from the last one, but I do have a question, so I'll go ahead and ask it. The pay and compensation study, can, can somebody refresh my brain, what's the, what's the scope of that? What is it that we're looking for in that? I know we talked about it a couple of months ago.
There, I can maybe provide some comments on that. This has been discussed several times also with the school board finance committee and with comments that have come up with different employee groups over time, and because of the lack of step increases and also even general increases with employees, it was deemed necessary that we have some type of pay and classification study that would look at our pay as it compares to other districts to see if we're still competitive within the region, not only for teaching positions, but for support positions, and that's, that's the primary emphasis of it. It will also look at internal pay grade structure to see if it's, if it's, if it's appropriate, and if there's any recommendations to improve the pay grade structure.
Yeah, we've got a compression problem, and hopefully that'll straighten that out too during the, during that cycle. Ms. Williams?
Ms. Williams? Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. My question, I remember it came up for a discussion, but I don't recall it was anything that we made a decision that we were going to put in the budget this year. Now, you might have done it, the finance people, but in net, Mr. Steele just said, the finance people told, because that never came back to the board where we said that was a priority. We talked about it, but you all must have put it in because that, that didn't come to us. So I recommend that we take it out because that's something that we needed to vote on. Because I can look on Pilot Online and tell you what everybody makes without spending $50,000, because it has a comparison for each school in this area there. That's how we get it. But we never voted to list that as our priority for the budget, because that money can be used for teacher's assistance or some critical needs as far as I'm concerned. And every time we bring up issues about that wasn't a priority for us, we somehow get the same thing back because it has become a priority for perhaps you and Mr. Parent. I'm not sure.
No, no, no.
No, no, okay. Well, that shouldn't be in there.
No.
Unless, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's based on my thing, I'm saying the board has the vote to, to do that, to put it in there.
Mr. Parent?
Well, I mean, the board did receive a list of all of the, all of the potential uses for the reappropriating money, and the pay study was on there, and that has never been, I mean, no one has ever said to us that it, that it shouldn't be. It's, it's been on the list, and we agreed to it. I mean, we as a board agreed to it.
Well, we, that might be a discussion for the board at another time because that was not a priority for us. It might have come back on the list of reappropriation, but that was not one of our priorities that we had voted on, that we were interested in, even spending the money. And we do have some major priorities, is what my contention is. So I would suggest that we bring it back to our next meeting, and if, if the board votes to do that, then fine, but if not, that's how we solve that problem.
I know when we presented our budget, that that was part of, that was one of our priorities. And Mr. Bridgeford and I do not have the authority to act alone, and that's the reason I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here confused because you, all of you received a list of the priorities and the, and the amount that was going to be re-appropriated, and we agreed to it. So we can't, we don't have the authority to...
Well, we're, my, my concern was that you put something else in that, in the place of that, because...
But did we do?
But because I remember at the last meeting when Mr. Lamb said about the priorities, and Ms. Hines said, this is not the place that we will discuss that. We will do that at another meeting, or we will rank them, because we keep getting the list of the priorities that you all had ranked. Do you see what I'm saying? I know that's different for the appropriation.
No.
But we never said that, you all talked about the pay and classification.
The list that we presented at, to the city council, we listed everything on our priority list, everything.
Right.
Everything. This is one of them.
That's been left over from last year.
That was left over from last year. Everything that we have, have listed, we asked for it for city council. I understand...
Well, we're, we're saying that that's possible, but...
I mean, that's the truth.
Because we kept, okay, we kept getting into the discussion that we told you repeatedly, not you, it was Mr. Steele, that we said repeatedly, that is not our priority list. That is not how we want them ranked. As far as I'm concerned, I'm just know that could be at the bottom, but he continued to present to us what he had ranked at the top. You remember beside, because you were there.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I do remember ranking those, that, that was a sheet that we were asked to rank one through whatever with the extra first million or so that we had in reappropriations. I was, I, I thought that we had voted, and we never did talk about that sheet again. We ranked it, and, and things have come piecemeal in. We did not ever get a final ranking. This is what the board wanted to do, number one, number two, number three. I understand that confusion. With this pay and comparison study, is this being done with re-appropriated funds that we got back in January, because we did vote in January to accept re-appropriated funds and put them back into our budget? So is this coming from re-appropriated funds, or is this coming out of next year's school budget?
No, it's not next year's, maybe that's part of the confusion. The priority for next year, this is not on the list. This was on the list of those items that the school board was asked to vote for, for the re-appropriated money, but we also have additional money that was added on to that, including in this resolution, you'll see that we got additional state money for our increased ADM that is being projected, so we have additional state revenue, and also that we got some, I would say, unexpected revenue from our closing out of our previous liability manager, PMA, when they closed out the, the claims, we got an additional $215,000. So everything before we were prioritizing the list, based initially on a smaller amount that was just in the reappropriation, and we thought we could only pick on, off of some of those items. So what's happened is we've gotten additional revenue that, that we don't even have to prioritize anymore because now we can fund all those items.
So, I, I'm, I'm, I understand the frustration because to me, this was not in the top half of my priority list, was this pay and comparison study. Because the next question is going to be, what do we do with it? Are we going to have the funds to be able to make the adjustments that this pay and comparison study is going to tell us that we have? So I, I would like some further discussion about it as a board before we vote on it. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of discussion going on with regards to what was added, where, when, how, and so forth. I've got to say, just where I'm at, and we have heard now from Dr. Taylor and, and so forth about instruction, about these classrooms, we've been visited by instructional aides, we've been in others, and so forth. I have to agree with Ms. Williams. I mean, we, you can pull it up on Virginia Pilot Online, and you, we, we would know exactly who is making what. In fact, I think they even go out of their way sometimes to list every single position of city government and school board, and what is being made and so forth. I think that $50,000 could be better utilized in areas that we need, and at this point, I'm looking at the classroom. That's $50,000 more for one teacher's salary, an instructional aide or two. So I, I do agree, I think this is something that needs to be brought back up as a discussion before we start to accept or vote into as a, as an item at this time.
Reverend Fleming?
Mr. Steele, what does it mean when you say that the RFP is being prepared? I know there's no release date, but if you have prepared the RFP, does that mean that you have already begun to execute this?
No, there's no execution yet, and it even hasn't, it hasn't even been released. What it does mean is that a statement of work has been drafted up of what this particular requirement and, and vendor would do for this pay and classification study, and all the boilerplate for contractual language is being put together, and so it hasn't been released, the RFP is just, the document itself is being put together.
So you can stop it?
Sure.
That's, I think, I think that the board wants you to stop it, just in case it's not clear.
Yes. Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
My question, we, we want to vote for the reappropriation, but can we make an amendment that that particular amount be re-appropriated for something else, or just taken out, or what? I mean, how can we do that? We, we don't want to deny the reappropriation request, but before we vote, if we vote yes, it doesn't mean we're taking the package like you presented it for the...
No, you, it can be rolled up into something else.
Oh, it can?
Yeah, because it's part, it's part, in other words, it's part of total.
The total, so we could still discuss?
Yeah, where you want to put it.
Okay, that's, that's what we needed to know, for sure.
Dr. Whittaker?
Yes, my suggestion would be to come back and discuss this because I, I, we, I think we all need clarification on what the study would provide for us and how we could actually use it, you know, to request funds, you know, for teachers and such, because I know one of the things that we have discussed is the fact that even though we have a high starting salary, what you're seeing across the board is that we're losing teachers because their pay isn't increasing over time. So I think there's some value in this, but we need some more discussion of it.
Mr. Parent?
When we were talking about this reappropriation and we had a list, one of the things that we wanted moved up, which we did, and which we've just passed a resolution, was the, the spring break, the five days, so that went up. But when we met, when Mr. Bridgeford and I met, and we found out that we could fund all of the items on the list, then that's when we, that's when things moved forward because y'all had already reviewed the list, and we were going to, you know, we were going to have to prioritize, and we moved up everybody's request, or, you know, you wanted the, the spring break, and then when Mr. Steele came back and he says, guess what, we can do all these items. So I guess at this point, we're saying, well, maybe, I mean, we can afford to do the $50,000, but maybe what you're saying is that we don't need the pay, we don't need this pay study so we can use it someplace else. That's fine, but I want to, as a board member and a member of this subcommittee of the finance, Mr. Bridgeford and I are not trying to dictate or try to put something under the table or hide something from you, because that's not the way I do business, Ms. Williams. I mean, I'm, I'm, I try to be upfront, and the bottom line is that this was on the original list, and we were going to prioritize, which I thought we did, and then Mr. Steele said, you got all this money so you can do them all. So Mr. Bridgeford and I said, that's great, so that's why we're presenting this.
Reverend Fleming?
I think we are going to still have to discuss it because we definitely want to be clear on what the study is. I do have a question about transportation. Are we in the process of hiring more bus drivers, bus drivers being trained? I do not see anything on your report about that.
Bus drivers and bus monitors, along with a couple of other employee categories, we're in constant recruitment. We're always recruiting. The recruitment never ends, so the announcement is out there, and we accept applications at any time, and, and as we get the applicants...
We don't have a current class right now, there are no...
I'd have to get, I'd have to get the information on a current class.
But we are in need, correct?
Oh, we're always in need. We're always, always need bus drivers.
So are we having a motion on this?
Yes, and I certainly want to say, I certainly trust Mr. Parent and, and the chair, Mr. Bridgeford. It was a question, and we were all kind of fuzzy on what it was, and I believe at one of the meetings, we did say that we wanted you to look at the pay of the bus drivers and raise their pay to make sure that they were not at the top, but somewhere, because you said they were below the middle. So to me, if we have extra funding, that should go to them, but we can bring it back, and of course, the entire board would have to vote, but that is a priority for me. That's my personal opinion, because they have been to us and they have talked for most of the year, and so to, and, and I'm sure the conversation, Mr. Steele told Mr. Bridgeford and Mr. Parent, you had some extra money, but somehow with the snow days and everything else, maybe we didn't get it. So I'm just saying, I think we would like to clear it up, have some more discussion, and if that money can go to the bus drivers, then I certainly would be in favor.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Bridgeford, and I don't want to get too far off-topic because we still got either to decide if we're going to table this or, or take the item off or something, but as far as the bus drivers, at the last meeting, which was way back when, because of snow days and so forth, the issue was brought up about the training and how long it took, and it was determined that it was longer than the amount of time. What has been done to correct that? Has anything been changed to where something like that's not going to happen again?
As far as the length of time, or...
Well, the issue was that supposedly that we could have a class go through no more than six weeks. I proposed the question, how many people within so long had been taken up to six months, and we had some people stand. My question is, since that has been determined, what has been put in place to make sure that something like that doesn't happen again?
We can provide you the data again. On the last monthly report, we provided the data on the training, the length of time it takes, how many were in the queue, and in reviewing the records, none of them took more than six months in looking at every individual, so, I mean, it, and we also, what we did is we compared the length... So, I mean, and we also, what we did is, we compared the length of training time in prior years. So it looked like it was fairly consistent with prior years. That's not saying it's good now, but it was taking about the same amount of time. And as indicated on the training requirement, there is a lot of hours that have to be spent on the bus when you, when you're an applicant and haven't driven a bus before, and a lot of that takes the time, is that you have to be basically with a trainer on the bus and have a certain number of hours that you have to complete before you go on your own as a bus driver.
Correct. And I don't want to belittle the issue, but I think it was determined 20 hours on the road, 30 hours in the classroom, and that took no more than really two to four weeks. So my question is, since that time, I mean, I understand, and I read through what, the comparisons and so forth, but what have we done to correct that something like that will not happen again?
Well, I think we determined, first of all, it wasn't taking six months. We are trying to shorten the period as much as we can, but the real issue is getting enough applicants, and so that's where we're focusing on, on trying to somehow increase the number of applicants coming in at the, you know, at the very beginning of the training cycle.
Mr. Parrott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the budget highlights that you presented to the city council, the joint meeting, under the, under the quality improvement recommendation, you had a line drawn, and it says, Ms. Williams just brought it up, increase to bus driver monitor standard work week, equivalent to 20% increase to benefits. Now, that is part of what Mrs. Williams just brought up, correct? Looking at the bus drivers and the monitors, and extend their week and their pay?
Well, I mean, that's a compensation issue, yes.
Isn't that? Isn't that a pay increase?
It is a pay increase. That particular item, though, I think I pointed out, is the one and a half percent pay increase, they get an increase in their net pay, and a step increases their pay. That particular one doesn't necessarily increase their net pay, it increases their deferred pay through retirement. So they might not see on that one, grossly, they get, that's a 20% increase, but they're not going to see that particular part in their, in their net pay. It's a deferred pay item.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Moving on to item number 12A, revised budget FY 2014-15 for electronic vote. You have the executive summary before you. Do you need any discussion on that before a motion is made? Okay, you're confused. Let's move on. He finished his report for the budget and planning, correct?
Correct.
So the next item under that would be item number 12A, which I added as an addendum. So we're moving on to that, which is the, which is consideration of a revised budget for fiscal year 2014-15, which... Okay, am I the only one with this?
Then take it out.
Are you with me? In other words, we have additional funding that's going to be revised, that we have to do this, for the comeback with the appropriation, for reappropriation. So I'm looking for a motion. Everyone's sitting. I thought I was the only one with a sheet of paper after I gave it out in there. Are you with me?
Yeah, we didn't have a number.
Oh, 12A?
We didn't have numbers, so it was at the top of the list.
It went to the top.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have that sheet?
Okay, yeah, I gave it to them.
Zero, zero.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the revision for the proposed budget for 2014-15. Any discussion?
I don't know.
If there's no discussion, then board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll.
Madam Clerk?
Seven yes, folks, one no. It passes.
Okay, the next item is item number 13, consideration of a warfare paying operative contract, and Dr. Whittaker has specific wording for that.
Yes, I move to amend item 13, that the board will award the cooperative contract, but also the board will receive and review individual vendor award amounts for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we award the cooperative contract, however, we'll come back from the board for the approval for the specific vendor amounts. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Lamb?
Yes, I do have one question with it. By voting for this contract now, based upon what we've got with the estimates and so forth, if it comes back and we're not satisfied with the contract amount, does that make the first contract null and void, or how will that work?
This is a requirements contract, basically, and if I can quickly give some background, the co-op contracts until December, this past December, were exempt from the MWBE policy, and also exempt from going before the school board for approval. The school board amended the purchasing policy and the MWBE policy that required contract renewals and contract co-op contracts to go before also the board for review. This is the first time we've had a co-op contract since then, and this is one that's coming before the board. It's asking for approval to utilize the co-op contract, but no orders have placed yet. And in accordance with the proposed amendment, we will have this contract, but we haven't utilized any requirements against it. We will develop a scope of work for, say, these three projects, send them out to these vendors, and they will put in their proposals or bids under this co-op contract and the terms and conditions, and then we will decide on the award at that time.
Okay, so we're just voting on the concept of the contract itself, not necessarily the estimated amounts. All of that will come later.
It basically provides a turnkey vehicle that you can implement requirements after you've already had that vehicle in place.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other discussion, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll.
Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, consideration of the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, HIPAA privacy and security policies. Mrs. Steele?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the last school board meeting, you have provided copies of these particular policies. And as you recall, the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, commonly known as HIPAA, requires that certain policies pertaining to policy or privacy and security be in place for our self-insured employee health insurance. These two policies were presented. We will have one more policy that addresses privacy and security as it applies to information technology, and we're waiting for some input for the city, because our financial system is integrated with the city, and we're waiting for their comments. So there will be a third one after this, but these two are ready for approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steele. Board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, HIPAA privacy and security policy. Any more discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll.
Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Item number 15, for electronic vote, consideration of the financial report for January 2015. Mr. Steele?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're a little behind this year because of the snow days. We were going to present this in February, but because of the canceled days, you're seeing the February report now. You'll also see, or you'll see the January report now. You'll see the February report at our next meeting on March 26. In this report, this is our standard monthly report with the format that we started this year, and that, that we are also going to pass on a monthly basis to city council. And this summarizes where we are with revenue and expenditures. You can see by the burn rate chart that before, we were kind of ahead on expenditures, and now we're kind of going in line to what was occurring in the previous two years. And for right now, we're based on the reappropriations and the adjustments we have to make there, and depending on approval of the city on the quarterly appropriations, we're going to need to monitor closely as we go to end of year.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Parrott?
On page 11 of 14, under category technology, all the way down to the bottom, new hardware, new infrastructure add, is that what you indicated in your report earlier? Look under new hardware, the approved budget was 113,293. It was adjusted to 245, and the revised budget is 359, which expenditures is 285, which is 79%. In other words, we've spent, did Dean leave?
He's over there.
Dean, what is this? What did we spend? This new hardware, is it in your, your report of the technology?
Well, we talked about all the PCs that were...
Right, is that, is...
I believe that's most of this, and also, most of the IT budget in general is spent before the school year starts.
Right.
So they're always going to be ahead percent-wise than, than, you know, normal. It's not a straight-line percentage. So you'll see, in a lot of cases, technology has spent a lot of their money ahead of time in getting ready for the school.
That's fine. Now, what is the new infrastructure addition? What is that? I mean, we haven't spent much of that. What is that? Mr.?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, but a lot of that has to do with our effort to increase wireless infrastructure in the schools, or replace old routers and things like that, that are, we have some aged routers in all the schools.
Okay, I just want, color? Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, Ms. Williams?
I just, thank you, Chairman Richford. I just have one question, and maybe you could get the answer. I'd like to know if all the schools have cable?
Mike?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. I'd like to know if all the schools are equipped with cable for COGS communication, or, so I would like that report back, because I've been told some schools don't have cable, and certainly, I'd like to know that, that answer.
Do you know offhand, Dean?
Well, you got a budget of telecommunication to over $200,000, you ought to be able to have, do something.
Good evening. Yeah, the schools have cable television. We actually deliver the signal across our data network, so every PC in the, in the, in the building actually has access to basically four stream channels that are controlled by the principal of the building.
Do they have cable TV? I mean, a TV in each?
Well, when I first came onboard, the COAX infrastructure, which is, is the, the old cable infrastructure throughout the building, was, was aged, and it was determined, because of the, the amount of, of the data network that we had, that we would actually propagate and move the signal onto our data network. So if you know, we've got Promethean boards, and we've got a lot of projectors in classrooms, we deliver that signal, so they, they're watching it on a Promethean board, or watching it on a projector. We have portable projectors, they can bring a portable projector in, and so they're leveraging this technology to bring the cable channel to those, those mediums.
So all the schools have cable?
All the schools, except for our pre-K centers currently.
Okay, that's, that's what I need to know.
Okay.
Is this COGS cable?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board's pleasure. Ms. Williams?
I meant to push yes, I agree.
Okay, I need a motion first.
Move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the financial statement for the month of January. Any further discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll.
Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Richford. Well, first of all, I would just like to say that I am happy that it appears that the weather has broken, that we're beyond, let's hope, most of the snow, being in, I guess, in the middle of my, or like, third week or so, and about seven of those days being snow days, as you can imagine, I was a little stir-crazy. But glad to be in and actually getting started, doing some things. We've been running behind. I've been doing more meetings than I would like to do, because I like to get out and be visible in the schools, but things that we had to do out of my control, we had to take care of. But I would like to say that I am pleased to be here, happy to be sitting in this seat, look forward to great things to come. I'm pleased with the staff that I'm working with, and I'm looking forward to the new additions that we will be making in the near future. The students that presented earlier have already left, but maybe they will see it later. I just want to thank them again for coming and representing Churchland High School. I thought they did an excellent job, and I want them to know that. I was going to tell them, I did go out to Churchland, was it a day or two ago? Reverend Patello met me there as well, and I wanted them to know that I did have my orange, I had some orange in my tie, because I wanted to represent them, because I knew I was going to Churchland that morning. But I did see Dr. Fisher in, at the middle school when I, when I went over there. Also, I got some highlights that I want to share about our high schools. As I was in Churchland, they shared this information with me, and we have compiled some information that I would like to share at this time from Churchland High School. They did mention about their up-and-coming athletic program. They, they won first place in the FOI regional contest for indoor track. They were second place for FOI state competition for indoor track. So, let's see, and that was Christopher Walker that had those accomplishments. Scott Harrington placed third in FOI South Regional, and he also, in the men's 50 freestyle swimming, placed third. At IC Norcom, the track team won the state championship. They will leave tomorrow for New York to participate in the national championship. So congratulations for that honor, moving on to the national level. The board's basketball team at Norcom won the semifinals today, and the state championship will be held on Saturday in Richmond at VCU at 10:00 a.m. So definitely want to congratulate those student athletes from both of those schools, from their accomplishments, and as many of us that can, please, let's try to go out to support them, because that means a lot when they look in the stands and see that people back home are there to support them. Also want to share that I will have a general staff meeting on Monday. The meetings that I've had, the first general staff meeting was, of course, postponed due to the snow. The principals meeting that I was going to have, we had to push that back as well. So Monday, we'll start the process again. I look forward to meeting with the administrators Monday, Monday evening. I look forward to meeting with the administrators Monday evening, Monday afternoon, so that I can give you a little bit about my vision and my expectations as superintendent. Also, one of my priorities that I said I was going to do, I was going to have individual meetings with school board members. That is underway. Getting information, just getting each board member's individual perspective as it pertains to the list of questions that I have that involve community outreach, curriculum, and so forth, just to name a few. So that's good information for me as I move forward, setting my goals for the next school year. And school visits are in progress, so principals that are here, I will be coming out to visit. And it's not really, well, at this point, I'm just, I'm coming to visit to, so you can show me the highlights and talk to me about the needs. So there isn't a schedule, so don't think of it as a, it's a pop quiz or anything. I'm just letting you know now, I will be coming by, and this is just open dialogue, and I'll be taking notes when I come. So that's all I have for tonight. I just want to say thank you once again for everyone being so opening and welcoming to me as your new superintendent, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bracy. And there's one thing I failed to ask you. Review the agenda for March 26. Normally, the former superintendent, do you want to take that, continue with that, or?
Well.
I could do it. The agenda for the next meeting for the 26th, he normally reads off what's going to happen.
I can do it.
Do you want to keep that sequence, or I can give it?
Do you want to do it?
It's up to you. You're the superintendent.
I can, I can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm prepared anyway. All right, if you will, turn to the Thursday, March 26. I know usually we do this at the work session.
At the work session, right.
But being that we were thrown off schedule, we're prepared to do it tonight. So with that, if you look at the agenda for the 26th, the call to order, Mr. Bridgeford will have the moment of silent prayer. We will have the students from Douglas Park Elementary School to do the pledge and also the statement, school board mission statement, Ms. Wims. And then we'll have the attendance by electronic vote, approval of the agenda. IC Norcom, DECA students. Yeah, I think they were moved up, weren't they?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
No, they were just speaking on non-agenda items tonight.
Okay, all right. Item three, recognition of schools with the highest attendance rate for February. Item number four, consideration of resolution recognizing National Volunteer Appreciation Week. Number five, consideration of a resolution recognizing April as school library and media center appreciation month. Item number six, consideration of the minutes, the special meeting, public work session held on Thursday, February 12. The special meeting held on Thursday, February 23. Item seven, discussion, public comment on non-agenda items. Number eight, monthly report, curriculum and instruction, Dr. Taylor. Item nine, monthly report, human resources, Ms. Jessica Durin. Item number 10, 2016-17 instructional calendar. Item number 11, consideration of the employee transaction report for March 2015. Item number 12, monthly report, budget and planning, Mr. Steele. Item 13, consideration of categorical funding adjustment for fiscal year 2014-15. Item number 14, consideration of the financial report for February 2015. Item 15, superintendent's report. Item 16, consideration of the proposed operating budget for the 2015-16 school year. Item 17, board members' comments and concerns. And 18, adjournment.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number 18, do we have any board members' reports, comments, or concerns? Ms. Williams?
Just one. Since we're coming back next week for the public hearing, is that correct? Could you be sure to have the persons that we asked for these special reports for the, it was the day treatment programs or whatever in the buildings? We have the written information. Could we have, I think it was Ms. Sugars, to be there to answer any questions? Because I do have some questions. Uh-huh. And, okay.
She was prepared tonight.
Right, I think, I thought she was prepared tonight. And I know we didn't have enough time tonight to discuss the benchmark testing, but I know we did a lot of talking here tonight. Do we need to put that back on the discussion?
That was already mentioned that.
That we would do that?
Yeah, we would do that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I just want to make sure they, the staff would know.
Do you want to do it, do you want to do it the next meeting under the public work session, since we anticipate that to be not, because Mr. Steele gave his presentation, that's a half hour. Then if you have any speakers?
Well, in the room, you suggested we do it after the, you thought it'd be short so we could go back.
That's what I'm thinking, that we could, you could do it right after that. We close the public work session, and then.
And then go.
Yeah, go in there, because I figured if you do that, it wouldn't take over two hours total.
Yeah, I think that'll be good since we'll be here.
Yeah, we'll be here already, and that eliminates trying to take care of it during the, because the next meeting is a regular meeting also.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Are you the only one? Okay. Okay, all right, next item is number 19. If there's no other business coming for this board, this meeting is adjourned.